Twenty first, twenty twenty one. We called our board meeting to order at six P M and immediately went into executive session for the purpose of interviewing the finalists for the ten month position as since for assistant principal at Eastline High School and also an item discussion of employment contracts with our superintendent. We now are out of executive session and we'll move on to pledge allegiance and I'd like everybody to rise and join myself and Amy Brown on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have some public comment this evening and for the first time since along for a long time we're here. We are going to have some public comment via Zoom and then we're also going to have some public comment from some individuals that are here with us. And so my first understanding is the somebody on Zoom, Mr. Borelli is going to address this, I might or Matt. Okay, so just give us your name and address.
Thanks, I live, my name is Matthew Borelli and I live at fifteen Indianola Road in Niantic. Should I start my comments or?
Yes, please do.
Okay. I'd like to give you a little context. I was impressed by the fact that several months ago we were painting murals, Black Lives Matter murals with the fist all over Connecticut and now we're painting thirty-nine murals of Martin Luther King all over Connecticut. And I was waiting for somebody to say, what's the similarity, what's the difference here? And so I started on a quest of finding out what's, what's the difference between the two symbols? And I, the way I want to do it tonight is I want to take you down to the football field. It's been set up in your honor for a game that this country is about to play. On one end, jarted into the turf is the portrait of Martin Luther King Junior. At the other goalpost pictured is a raised clenched fist. And I'd like to introduce you to the team members and their positions. For the Martin Luther King Junior team, the Dalai Lama, who says, love and compassion are necessities, not luxuries. Without them, humanity cannot.
Matt, can you hear us?
You've gone on, we lost audio.
Matt, yeah, you're, you're on mute or?
Yeah, he's on mute.
Okay, I'm back. Am I okay or not?
Yes.
Okay. Martin Luther King Junior. I stand in the middle of two opposing forces in the Negro community. One is the force of complacency made of Negroes who have unconsciously become insensitive to the problem of the masses. And the other force is one of bitterness and hatred coming perilously close to violence. Again, he said, there are still forces in America that want to divide us along racial lines, religious lines, sex and class, but we've come too far. We've made too much progress to stop and pull back. We must go forward. I believe we will get there. Mahatma Gandhi, justice that love gives is a surrender. Justice that law gives is a punishment. Nelson Mandela, to be free is not merely to cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects enhances the freedom of others. John Lewis, my fellow Americans, this is a special moment in our history, just as all, just as all people of all faiths and no faiths and all backgrounds, creeds and colors banded together decades ago to fight for equality and justice in a peaceful, orderly, nonviolent fashion, we must do so again. And then he said, you have the capacity and the ability to take what people did and how they did it and forgive them and move on. Tyler Perry, it is my hope that all of you will teach your children to just refuse hate. I refuse to hate. And the last team member is Indira Gandhi, you cannot shake hands with a clenched fist. Now for the other team, which is Malcolm X, Black Lives Matter, and I should put in here Critical Race Theory. Malcolm X, there can be no black white unity until there is first some black unity. Concerning nonviolence, it is criminal to teach a man not to defend himself when he is the constant victim of brutal attack. Cornell Lewis, black and brown people in America seem to think the only way to get across, we want justice is by praying, picketing and kneeling, holding hands with the oppressor. It hasn't seemed to work. U E P Newton, we have two evils to fight, capitalism and racism. We must destroy both capitalism and racism. Malcolm X was the first political politician in this country that I really identified with. Mohammed Elijah, discard your former slave masters' names, be willing to accept one of Allah's pure religious names that he alone will give our people from his own mouth, but a good name is indeed better than gold. The Nation of Islam, blacks can only concede by developing themselves apart from a wider American society. Angela Bell, if you ask if you are a racist, you are a racist. If you don't ask if you're a racist, you are a racist. Derek Bell, one of the founders of Critical Race Theory. It is hopeless for the Negro to expect complete emancipation from the menial, social and economic position into which the white man has forced him merely by trusting the moral sense of the white race. However, the large number of individuals white men do and who will identify themselves completely with the Negro cause, the white race in America will not admit the Negro to his equal rights if it is not forced to do so. Upon that point, one may speak with dogmatism, which all history justifies. And he says further, power in the hands of the reformer is no less potentially corrupting than in the hands of the oppressor. You, by the way, thank you for your service. You must select which team you're on. Decisions, the decisions you make in the near future will determine which path you will have our children follow. Your choice will bring us as a country to become either a nation of one race with many colors or a nation of many races of color. These two paths don't lead you to the same end. And just as passing, I would like to just take one more minute if I may, and the concern I have for the children during this process.
Matt, you're back on mute again.
I'm sorry. My daddy's black, big and strong. My mommy's hair is blonde and long. We're a great family, black and white. My hair is curly, my skin is white. The streets are filled with signs you see. I'm not sure what they're telling me. The signs say police are brutal. That's not what Ms. Jones taught us in school. I like her, she teaches me what is right. Can I believe her? Of course she's white. In my school, my scores don't lack. The signs say I'd do better if Ms. Jones was black. I'm just eight, don't know what to do, can't tell who to listen to. Am I just the color of my skin or what mommy daddy put within? My name's Jamal, my friends are Brian and Dale. Can't we play anymore because they're pale? The people in the street call us to join the fray. March with us, it's the only way. We was joined as one to fight the fight. Only black people can make it right. Mommy, mommy, what happens if this is true? Can daddy and I still keep loving you? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks very much. Our next public comment is from an individual here.
Wyatt.
No.
Ferrier.
Kurt. Kizer. So you'd like to Kurt? Thank you. Okay. Would you like to step up to the podium? Are you both going at the same time? Okay, go ahead.
George and Wyatt.
And Wyatt Ferrier, so. Okay, and that's fifty South Edgewood Road, Niantic.
Yes.
For Kurt and Kurt, I'm sorry, and thirty-three Cory Lane, Niantic for Wyatt.
Yeah.
Good, all right.
All right. Hi, I'm George Kizer in this Wyatt Fair and we are both students at Eastline Middle School and we are talking to try to get middle school sports back. So we have all been through a tough year due to COVID. I think that one way to move past COVID is to have middle school sports. Not only would sports bring friends, friends together, but we could all make new friends. I've made a lot of friends through sports. Sports will bring us together socially and help us build better relationships. Sports are also a part of education. You will learn a lot from sports and need to be thinking at all times. You use strategy and have to work well with others. It also keeps us away from technology. Sports are also viewed as an extension of the classroom. It would feel great to be able to play middle school sports and represent our school and community. Here's some sports offered by neighboring towns.
Waterford has boys and girls basketball and they also have boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls soccer, cross country and girls volleyball. Westbrook has field hockey, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, softball, boys and girls track and field. Old Lime has boys and girls cross country, girls and boys soccer, girls and boys on basketball, baseball, softball, boys and girls outdoor track too. Montville also has track, boys and girls basketball, cross country.
Currently, we have cross country and swimming. I play basketball, baseball and soccer. Those would be the sports I would want to have. Since I run cross country, I know that a lot of people do it. That shows that many kids like me would want middle school sports. I've been told that this will help check the boxes for equity and a way to spend COVID money. Please consider this request and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, and our last public comment is via Zoom with Elizabeth Mondello. Elizabeth, are you there?
I, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. So this is Elizabeth Mondello at twelve Black Oak Drive in Eastline. So to the Board of Education, Eastline Board of Education and Superintendent Newton, good evening. I am writing today for two reasons. The first is to say that I can see that this board genuinely cares about trying to do their best for the students of Eastline and I really appreciate that and the effort that the board puts into this school. I believe that every person and especially every child is a unique and valuable person that deserves to be treated as an individual. As a taxpaying town resident, I get to state my objections to any of this board's decisions, policies and expenditures. At the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, Eastline Board of Education meeting, board members and Superintendent Newton made unfounded, deeply hurtful and defamatory attacks on me about my objection to a board decision. I am requesting that these allegations be immediately retracted by this board and administration. Sincerely, Elizabeth Mondello.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mondello. And that concludes our public comment for the evening and we'll move on to recognition of staff, actually very, very important staff, right? Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It, it brings, well, great sad to say, I guess I'll, I'll start with, you know, there's so many different ways to start, you know. Amy has been, you know, a true wonder for our district, you know, in so many facets over the last five years. And but, you know, and we all know all of the work and effort that she has put in, but you know, if I have to sum it up, Amy cares about people. And that's really the message, you know, for tonight and to share with Amy that everybody in this district, whenever Amy walks in the room knows and feels, you know, the, the passion, the concern, the, how's your children doing, the, you know, the, the relationship component. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we get that out tonight, that Amy, out of everything you've done, I, I most appreciate that fact, that you've, you've cared about people across this district and that's built relationships and that's what Eastline is about. So I personally want to thank you for, for that aspect and I'm going to turn it over to Candace.
Thank you.
Amy, on behalf of the entire Eastline Board of Ed, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for unwavering commitment and dedication to our students, our families, our teachers, our administrators and everyone in between. You have been a true champion for Eastline from the very moment you started here. Your ability to lead and empower those around you is a true gift. And I want you to know that our entire district is a stronger, more unified team because of you. I also want you to know that the impact that you have had here is immeasurable. There isn't a data point that I can refer to nor an outcome marker of any kind. However, there is another way to identify impact and it's simple. It's how you made people feel. You helped rebuild relationships, you created continuity and you brought a level of respect and value to each and every person you have met. The seeds of empowerment that you have planted here in Eastline will continue to grow and for that we are all forever grateful for the lasting impact you have had here. So on behalf of everyone, we wish you and your family the very best in your next chapter. You are loved.
You see my phone number come up? It is a phone number in the moment and you will pick up. Speech. You know, I said it to the administrators, I said it to teachers, I said it to their couple of parents, I truly do feel that I was meant to be any slime for these five years. I feel that I was just the stars aligned. I always said to Jeff, you're really going to hire people? Boy, did you take a chance on me. But I really do feel that it was just synergy of the right time, right place. I am so proud of what we were able to accomplish as an administrative team, as teacher colleagues, the students. We have pulled up more than I ever imagined that we would in the course of five years. I leave this role greatly proud, feeling nothing less than supported and I have a lot of pride in the work and sort of where you are. And I believe in your future. I believe that we have done a fantastic job developing capacity, building sustainable systems and I feel as though it's just going to get even better every year. So again, I said it to you and through the weekly update, I'm blessed to have you, I've been a character in your Eastline story and I appreciate it.
Yes, and Candace is not going to stand in front of the door.
I will not blockade the door like I've said that I would.
I've already tried. Okay, so we've got some minutes to approve. We got the minutes from our May twenty-fourth meeting, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
And Candace seconds it. Any changes, corrections, modifications to those minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? And, and? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I, I, okay, good. All right, Lee abstains. So those minutes are passed and we have the seconds out of minutes from our June seventh Board of Education meeting, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. And if they'd like to make a motion on those.
I'll second.
Second? Was that Candace?
It was.
Okay, good. And are there any corrections, modifications to those minutes? Nope. None? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
I think this was the one that Chris one was here, but he's marked down as not being.
He was the Zoom.
No, not Chris one, I'm sorry, Chris Urban. I just.
Oh, Chris was with us.
I think I got.
He was on site.
I can't get it to move, so I can't.
All right, well, we'll go check it.
One of them said he was on Zoom and he was really here, so I don't.
We can check.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so.
Thanks, James.
Yeah, all right.
I just, I think my computer froze and I.
Okay, so with that modification, if, if there is that adjustment is, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Good. Those, those minutes are adopted with the adjustment if Candace and Jeff, I see it. Okay, selectmen represented, we have Mr. Cunningham here this evening. Hi, Dan.
Well, going after Amy, it's like going after the Beatles. I'm not doing my best. Congratulations. So of interest to this board, the Board of Selectmen did recommend for approval and to the Board of Finance a special appropriation for the one million seventeen thousand. I don't know if they have approved it yet.
One million seventeen thousand?
I believe that's right.
C I P.
One million seventeen thousand, okay.
Yeah.
It's just a weird number.
Yeah. Yeah.
And for various Board of Education projects and I don't know if it's been on their agenda yet. Anyhow, it should be heading to them if they haven't already looked at it for approval. Um, some other items, we're trying to get a new copper truck for the Niantic Fire Department, very essential. Recently we've had needed, we've needed to bring in trucks from other municipalities to fight a fire. So it's very important that we have the adequate equipment to do that. That's where the board, we approve that. Let's see, money to fix the roads and hundred and fifty thousand to repair the roads. About eight thousand dollars, we're just providing money all over the place, about eight thousand dollars for something called max boxes and those are boxes that have a key. So if you have a commercial building or even a private residence, there's a key in there and the fire department can use that key to get into your home or to a commercial building to fight a fire in an emergency. So a very important thing, the ones we have are old and there's a question of security about the, those keys and who does it. So that's, that's about it. We, we have been looking at the, you know, the American Rescue Plan money and we did have a list of items that we were going to start moving forward, but then in retrospect there was some information that perhaps some of the items we had planned for wouldn't get approved, that we really have to study that legislation that I can make sure that we're within the bounds of it. So we're going to be doing that and probably making another recommendation for that. So that's my report this evening. I'll see you in another year and I'll sit. You won't be here, Amy, it won't be the same. But anyhow.
Any questions for Dan?
No, just to thank you. Thanks, Dan.
One question, how's the police, new police station coming?
Yeah, so there was a tour and unfortunately I had a conflict, I did get to tour through it, but supposedly it's, we're hoping the next month or two, you know.
Oh, wow.
It'll, it'll be completed. We're hoping for July, we're almost there. So we get the police over there and then it'll free up other space and I think ultimately it's going to be a good thing. I know there's a lot of controversy over it, but I think once people get in and see it, see what was done, I think it's going to be a good asset for the, hopefully that's coming together. I am going to ask, excuse myself, I have another meeting I have to attend, but I will try to catch up if that's on Zoom later on.
Okay.
When it's done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And for all the good work everybody does.
Good to see you, Dan.
Nice seeing your face.
Thank you. How'd you know it was me?
I would never miss you.
Okay, so we don't have a consent agenda this evening. That moves us to our discussion action items for the evening. First one up under personnel, for discussion and actions, proposed appointment of a one point zero F T E ten month assistant principal for the Eastline High School.
Yeah, absolutely. So it brings me a great pleasure to bring before you Julie Schwetsch, who's with us this evening and Mrs. Kelly, our high school principal and our high school administrative team and staff members did a great job with the process, really narrowing it down and finding a, I would say a wonderful candidate who is excited, passionate about, you know, joining the high school and joining our, our district and our administrative team. Julie comes to us from Middletown where she's been an art teacher and it's been the department head, you know, for the visual arts as well and really has a smattering of some really nice components that fit in within our district. It's worked for D E I and some other components that are really going to complement, especially at the high school level, because Deb and Henry are both kind of that counselor side and academic side, but Julie brings it, you know, the, the special area with the arts. So it's a, it's a nice compliment to this building. So Julie, we're, we're excited to bring you before the Board of Education and I'll, I'll turn it over to the board and when you're ready, I'll ask Julie to come to the podium and introduce her family as well, who's with us.
So with that, anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Julie Schwetsch. Did I say that right? For the position of one point zero F T E ten month assistant principal at the Eastline High School.
I'll second it.
There was a second, was that Jill? Good, okay, Jill seconds it. Any discussion on this? Everybody else at, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Passes unanimously and Julie, well, welcome to Eastline. Introduce your family and, and say a few words about how come you're doing this.
Sure. So my family's over there, they've been very patient, my kids. So my daughter's Meadow, she's six and going into first grade next year. My husband Dave and then my son Dawson will be four in September. I would like to sincerely thank the board for appointing me to the ten month assistant principal position at Eastline High School. I have had such a warm welcome from this outstanding district and I'm truly honored to join this community. I'm looking forward to starting this exciting new step in my educational career. It cannot wait to meet the students, staff and families of Eastline High School. Thank you again and have a pleasant evening.
Perfect. Yeah, let me enjoy yours. You got two little ones to get home. We'll just take a brief pause here.
Stop by Dairy Queen.
Oh, I love Dairy Queen at least twice a week.
Lee Ryan Hart will text me sometimes. They just went to Dairy Queen for lunch.
Oh, I go for the code at least twice a week if I shouldn't be in my office, I can walk to it, it's so scary. And I can see when the line is not too long.
Very good. Great. So our next item up for discussion action is proposed one year contract renewal for school medical advisor, Dr. B J C Cap, which should be effective July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth. Do you want to just, I'm moving around? Oh, I'm sorry, did I, oh, I jumped, my eyeballs jumped, I'm sorry. The whole thing shifted on me. Sorry about that, we'll take that back. Okay, oh, yeah. All right, well, yeah. So the last item up under personnel is for discussion and action is proposed performance evaluation for our superintendent Newton for this past year, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year for Jeff. And just to say a few comments on the, the overall, Jeff, we are, have been extremely proud of and pleased with the way you've led the district throughout a unique year, which was obviously filled with unprecedented challenges. Jeff has done so with urgency, outstanding judgment, resiliency and compassion for everyone. The Board of Education commends him and his team for their tireless efforts, innovative solutions and flexibility to meet the hurdles of the past year. Board of Education is eager and excited to work with Mr. Newton and his team as the district recovers and moves forward in the coming year. Jeff, on behalf of the entire board, certainly thank you for all your services for this past year. Thank you. And look forward to the next many years to come. Absolutely, thanks. Would anybody like to add anything to, to say anything in addition? Okay, all right, all right, so. Okay, all right, all right, so, so with that. So who would like to make a motion to approve proposed performance evaluation to superintendent Newton?
I will. I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed performance evaluation for superintendent Newton for twenty twenty to twenty twenty one school year.
I'll second.
Second, was that Jill or Candace on this one, okay? And the second's it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Passes unanimously, again, thanks Jeff for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Definitely crazy here. So the next item up for discussion and actions is the proposed employment contract for superintendent Newton, which would be effective July first, twenty twenty one, and the board has. Worked with Mr. Newton to make some adjustments to his current contract. First, the most important one is we're adding another year to your contract, so there's a three year rolling window in front. Your salary, base salary has been adjusted basically accordingly in line with the administrative team, that would be two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollar base salary. We've made a minor adjustment in your annuity and I've also allowed authorization for you to. Get paid out on some of your unused vacation, and but the stipulation with that, Jeff, is that we mandate that you take two weeks of vacation in July. Jill Karini is in charge of stealing your laptop and cell phone, so.
I have a plan. Believe me.
I will leave it for you.
And a couple of other minor things, consistent, really consistent with the administrative. Teams contract, and that is. The superintendent shall be provided with a hundred percent tuition allowance for the maximum of twelve credit hours per year. By the district, and that's to enable Jeff to take advantage of some more continuing education and. He's seriously thinking about pursuing, getting his doctorate, maybe starting next year, so. So that would be very good. And the last thing is that consistent with the administrative team, Jeff will be paying eighteen percent of his premium costs on his health insurance plan, and that's up from seventeen percent, that's consistent with the, the other thing, so. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion to approve his employment contract?
I will. I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed employment contract for superintendent Newton effective July one, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second.
Second, good. Any further discussion?
I'd like to just say I'm really proud, Jeff, and happy that you're going to pursue your PhD or EBD, whatever you, but. I know that you've got great potential and I think that will only expand your perspectives and give you a better footing, and so I don't know if you're going to do that, so thank you.
Have you started to apply?
Oh, yeah, no, that will be later in the summer.
I'm just moving on, trying to, you can go forward.
Anybody else? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Again, that passes unanimously, and for members of the public, both copies of Jeff's performance evaluation after Jeff and I both sign it. And his new school contract after both Jeff and I sign it will be, is, are available in central office for anyone who wants a copy or wants to review it, so. With that.
Yes, the question?
Yeah.
Would you just, on a personal basis, let us know what school you decide to go to?
Yeah, sure.
I'm assuming you will, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd like to support you in whatever, well, I wouldn't, I know, I'm assuming the rest of the board would like to support you in whatever way we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much, great. Okay. All right. Focus in here, next, next item, somehow I jumped forward here with the computer. So next items are under finance facilities and community, the first one up for discussion actions, proposed one year contract renewal for the Visiting Nurses Association of Southeastern Connecticut. Which would be effective July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Jeff, do you wanna?
Yes, so we, thank you, Tim, so we, we shared the contracts with everyone to take a look, basically, you know, the verbiage is all the same, what did change is the rates, the rates for service. So if you had a chance to take a look at those, but the RN rate will be going up from sixty seven, eighty seven, up to seventy one, fifty. Notice, you know, the years passed, there's been a lot of time since two thousand eighteen that the rates haven't gone up, so. It, it, we could say, you know, Kim, you know, we worked with Lee Hendrickson, VNA. I guess we're not surprised that rates are increasing, so, and health aid rate is increasing as well, twenty three, sixty nine, up to twenty four, twenty five. But, you know, VNA has been great to work with, they've always had subs for us, we've never had any issues, they've been a wonderful organization, so we've been very happy with them.
Questions? Our hours are all still the same.
Do we know what our bottom line total will be changed to? Yeah.
Yeah, five or six hundred thousand.
How many nurses is this kind of in line with what Jamie I think is asking, how many people are this?
Yeah, if you, well, if you look at what the past year was, remember, we increased health aid, so we're reducing back on the health aid account, but high school, two nurses.
Every building has its own nurse and currently the middle school has been dot sharing, so two nurses cover a league. So, six, by four whole five, two doctors.
So that is for all of our nurses across the entire district, none of our districts are employees of the district.
No, it's all through the VNA contract. Yeah.
Do they get benefits in that, through that, or?
It's all part of, they have a part of their marketing group, through, yeah, through the VNA, so, yes, yeah.
Either five fifty, five hundred fifty two, or five hundred seventy two?
It's going from one to the other?
Oh, you want to know the change?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry. So it will be either five fifty two or five seventy two, I'll get you the change.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Any other questions or comments on this? You know, periodically, you know, the board.
It doesn't change my mind, I just was curious.
Okay, reviews, what's the right strategy and always kind of comes back to this.
Yeah, it's always a question we ask, and I live both worlds.
Many times about going private and it's.
It's, yeah, it's a lot of work effort in getting subs is the biggest.
Right.
Problematic area, and that's I remember dealing with when I was a director of student services at different districts when we had a row, and so. I, you know, Kim and I talked and, you know, and we've had some, some very good luck, and we've got some real consistency with our nurses too, that have been in the buildings.
Okay. And how many health aids does this include?
Our total number of health, health aids, because different from what this year has been, because we're dropping back down.
We have one in every building this year, so we have five, so next year we'll go back to just having them at the middle school and the high school.
But subject to change, okay, if we start to see issues, you know, and things flare up, we might need to reinstate those health aids.
At this point, we know that we have, we have to have those isolation rooms, which we had to have as a, you know, as a strategy this year, and so the health aid, we're really staffing that second location, if you will. And are we, you know, without the requirement to have that, that, you know, we sort of went back to our typical staffing level.
Are they responsible for audio live screen in the store?
Yeah.
What based, we did that in the.
Oh, boy.
Middle school.
Day and third, I want to say, but I could look that up.
In the middle school, so those with scoliosis screenings at the middle school too.
Scoliosis.
Yeah.
And then weights and.
No, we don't do weights anymore.
No.
No.
And then meds.
And you know, as the years have gone on, the, the trends tend to, you know, more care for a few diabetic students, we have more than like one diabetic student in the district than in previous years and. Other, you know, just complex medical conditions that the doctors are managing in the health aid.
Okay, thank you.
Good, yeah, very good, Kate. Anybody else? Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion on this contract?
All right, I would like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign a one year contract renewal with the Visiting Nurse Association for the period July one, twenty twenty one to July thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Second?
Second.
Second, Kate seconds it. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Passes unanimously. Now we can move on to the next one, which I got halfway reading through reading until Jamie and John grabbed me by the arm, sorry. So this is for discussion action, this is proposed one year contract renewal with the school medical advisor, Dr. BJ Secap, which would be effective July first. Twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Jeff, gonna say?
Yeah, there's no change in this whatsoever, as we move into, you know, next year, it's basically the same as it's been this past year. We definitely utilized his services this past year more so than we have in my entire, I think, six, seven years in district, so that's for sure. Yes, Joe?
We just have a quick question, I'm gonna assume he's board certified as. I don't know, general practitioner or whatever, that's not a board certification, what my concern is, and I know we only have a pandemic, it seems like every one hundred years. I just felt concerned as we got further into it, that I wish we had like an epidemiologist or someone who. Oh, gosh, I can't think, what is, what's the board cert, someone who's board certified in, like, a Dr. Fauci? Excuse me, I know, but I'm just saying, I felt like we keep going to the head of. You know, the head of our local health department and to him, and I, I was looking, I was just thinking, maybe we had a higher level of. Just a higher, a higher level of resource when dealing with this pandemic, I, I personally felt that we might have been back to school sooner. And I just, I don't, not that those two men are not highly educated and respected in their fields, but I think we kind of. There was so much going on, it was going so rapidly that I felt like maybe we could have someone else, but it wasn't like a time that we could talk about money, but. Maybe our next pandemic, we might want to think. I don't, you know what I'm saying, I just thought, or our next situation, if it's highly, whatever, let's look for a specialist, I mean. Maybe think about it, I don't know how much it'll cost us. We can start with Dr. Fauci and work down. I know, he was, he was amazing, but anyway, my opinion, so I just wanted to say that, I think we needed better resources.
I think the interactions that I saw with Dr. Secap with the, what's the health. Steve Mansfield and the state epidemiology.
Yeah, Matt Carter and.
Yeah, and the level of engagement was really, really very good, and, and Dr. Secap also handles several school districts, including on New Haven. So he is, he is very much hardwired across the world of education. In terms of this type of.
I didn't know we were having, I, I didn't know we were having those discussions, I think.
No, I was, I was just giving you.
Yeah, so thank you for letting me know, I thought it was just the, the three of you making these decisions. Okay, well, I didn't know, so good, thank you.
Yeah, there's a whole regional approach to that, too. And, you know, we, you know, actually can relies on a lot of, you know, if he doesn't know something.
Is he a PhD or an MD? He's an MD, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's he board certified in?
Well, he was in the vaccine development online disease, I know my kids are in the trials here.
Yeah.
So he's a virologist, okay, okay.
He's infectious disease.
I think he's doing it, so I.
That's the word I was looking for, board certified infectious disease, sorry, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know, we've used him in the past when we had that meningitis outbreak.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the schools years ago.
Always been responsive.
Yeah, yeah, he's certainly a very.
He's employed by the Department of Health?
No, nope.
Dr. Secap?
He's not, no, he's on his own, he, he talks with them frequently and gathers information just as, as we do, but he's not employed by the Department of Health, no.
Cause he's supposed to listen, please? Okay, all right, just check him out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so anybody like to make a motion, the one year contract renewal?
I will. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign a one year contract renewal with the school medical advisor, Dr. BJ Secap. For the period July one, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Okay, there a second? Kate seconds it. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? Pass, pass unanimously. Move on to our next item, which is the COVID relief funds and usage of the ARP, well, the ARP update. Listen, I know that the. This was just reviewed at the FFO meeting this.
Yeah, so we, we went through this at FFO, and one of, I think, the biggest things for us is getting out of the gate early, I'm sure this is at FFO, getting out of the gate earlier and. Locking in some of these positions was extremely helpful, because we knew that we'd be up against, you know, other districts, obviously, for hiring. I think we've done, you know, a, a great job so far, I, I won't run through, you know, every single position, but one, one thing that was caught at FFO, Tim caught. That is now on, we switched to the elementary math coach, we neglected to put that on, that was discussed at the last Board of Ed meeting, and that's, that's on. So, you know, when you look at, this is laser one year positions as well, whether they get into the operating budget or they continue to be funded by COVID dollars or grant funding ERP. In the subsequent years to be determined, but the bottom line, we're sitting right around, you know, just under five hundred thousand dollars remaining as we think about, you know, the following, the following year. That could go up, that, that could go down, you know, for instance, you know, the pathways, we have a hundred thousand dollars allotted for next year. It's a bit, a little bit smaller than, than we initially thought, just because of the hiring that's needed or was needed with it, so we might have a little, a few more dollars to play with there. So it's gonna have variations as we move through the rest of the summer, but we want to make sure you get a snapshot of what's been completed, what's still in process. And, you know, where we stand, and you would all receive the class size list as well, so that kind of wraps into this too at the elementary level of where we stand there. And hence, you can see that, you know, kindergarten teachers, those who were hired, the grade two teachers, completed, hired, paraprofessionals are in process, you know, in the direction of Karen, Cheryl, and Jenny and Deuce. So, we broke it out too with, you know, SIR funds and ARP funds, I remember our ARP requests are due in August, so towards the end of August, we have to have, you know, that document in, and done. Have to go over any questions about career positions?
Well, I'm, I'm curious, of, of course you're doing this, but I just feel like I need to ask due diligence is that you are informing and telling people that it is a one year contract.
Exactly.
That it may or may not be subject to renewal based on this position.
Yep, exactly, yeah. We will definitely be doing a potential reduction in force process, you know, next year, we did not have to do that this year, but usually typically we do that every year. So we, we might see some of that occur, and it will depend, a lot will depend on what we get into the operating budget too, if we decide collectively we want some of these brought forward, so a lot will be based on this.
We just don't want unionists to pop up as our.
Exactly, yes, I know, we need to be crystal clear with folks, so they, you know, they know that these are one year, one year positions, and hopefully, hopefully more, but we'll see.
Just had to ask.
Yep, no question.
Hey, anybody else? All right, so. That's just for discussion, the next item is the Eastline Public School Audit Management Advisory Letter, and that's actually. An audit that's conducted of the town of Eastline as well as. The Board of Ed, the Board of Ed, and Jeff, you have any highlights on this?
Yeah, I'll kind of turn it over to Mariana to kind of talk a little bit about this, but it's a shared component between the town and, and the Board of Ed, and they make their, you know, their recommendations. If you had a chance to kind of take a look at them, but Mariana, any one of highlights specifically?
That's the one item, I mean, most of these items are specific to the town, but the one item which we briefly discussed that policy is the, our purchasing. The town, and we have to update our purchasing policy to comply with some federal requirements that came through, so. I'm working on that and, you know, we'll have that to the board, but other than that, I know our recommendations. For the, you know, Board of Ed were, I don't think there was anything else. Of course, board, I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, I mean, our section of the audit were treated as a department of the town, so a bulk of their audit is our grants. Our food, this year they audited our, our food service. Fund, and they audited one of our, our idea six eleven. Um, our food this year, they audited our our food service um fund, and they audited one of our uh our idea six eleven grant. And then, you know, uh, regular again, uh, upgrading budget. Specific or any questions?
They do it to get target specific requirements, they don't look at the entire.
No, they do see it right, they do samples and with the grants, they need to get a certain number, a certain percentage of coverage. So if you don't really have a ton of grants, so typically they will pick the idea grant on idea six eleven grant because that's a the biggest chunk. And then uh depending on how they're sampling, and this was a new audit from this year, depending on their how their sampling falls, um, they may pick a different. They typically will pick another brand every year. The year before was Title One and Idea. This year was our food service account because we get it off quite a bit through USDA and then um our idea grant. And then they do a sampling of our uh of our upgrading budget, and again, if they find that everything's okay, they don't extend the sample and.
Thank you.
Good. You know, there's any other questions, comments uh on this? Pretty straightforward, I I think that they like that we're going to the unit system.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a. The other auditor was pushing it too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's a big plus. Okay, all right, should we move on? Okay, so the next items are under policy. Um, and the first one that's up is uh for discussion and possible action. Um, and this has to do with the extension of the temporary COVID nineteen policy, um thirty two fifty five C. Jeff, you want to say?
Yeah, just so everybody's aware, um, you probably remember we've talked about all of our COVID policies expire at the end of this month as of June thirtieth. Um, in talking regionally, you know, with other districts, talking with um, you know, legal. Um, we've all felt it's important to to leave this one part, and I spoke with Jamie about this uh as well, I called her because I didn't go to the policy uh committee first. Um, but it's important for us to leave this one policy in place that allows dictates, you know, the board to to tell administration, tell myself, you know, to make sure that we have such health and safety protocols still in place. We don't know when we walk in next year, whether we'll all be wearing masks or not, whether we have to use mitigation strategies. So we really need to have something in place that that dictates then allows, you know, uh uh a COVID policy, basically. So this one, we might have to add more, we don't know, but at this point, um, so the legal is kind of recommending that we uh we utilize. So um, that's where that's coming from, and that's the board to, you know, to adopt that one.
Jamie, anything to add from?
No, it, I mean, Jeff and I talked about it, and yeah, we don't know what the fall is going to look like, and we don't want to be scrambling in the fall to get something in place once everybody's back. Um, so this will cover that. We don't know, we just, this is one of those things, we just, it doesn't, we don't have any idea what's happening.
Someone adopted policy.
Right.
So we're just, yeah, we're just basically continuing, so we're not putting it out as a first and second. Right, yeah, yeah, clear.
We're gonna.
Yeah.
We're proposing to re-extend it for another year, just because. We have no idea what's gonna happen in the fall.
Yeah, just in the paper today, there was an indication of an uptick in COVID outbreak in certain parts of our state, not necessarily Connecticut, because I think you've been pretty good with mask wearing and mitigating the effects of it, but there are places that might be some hotspots and what they call the new Delta. Yeah, version of the virus that that might just be pretty bad, so I think this is just prudent.
We just don't want to scramble.
Exactly.
No, no, exactly.
For armed, Joe.
Just get our arm, get it's ready to go.
Yeah.
So this would be a motion to extend it.
Extend.
Extend it through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Is everybody okay, everybody good with that, so?
Jamie, did you want to make?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion um to extend the approved Board of Ed temporary COVID policies concerning health and safety protocols related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. That extension would go through uh June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Kate seconds it, any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Whether you abstain, passes unanimously. Okay, all right, so now we've got uh second readings that are are up and um. Jeff, was there, how do you want to handle these?
So um.
Or you and Jamie, is it?
Yeah, well, I had received uh some information back at uh prior um recently in relation to some of these, some suggestions um from a board member, so um I spoke, we talked to Jamie and and we spoke and um thought we should take this back to the uh policy committee. Um, this is.
Jeff and I spoke, um, and we got some feedback from board members, and we are going to pull B, C, and D and bring them back to the policy subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Good. So then that brings us to E. Uh, which is second, second uh reading for suggestive revisions, the policy forty one twelve point four certified health examinations. I didn't receive any.
Nope, nope.
Has anyone else from the board heard anything or have any concerns, questions?
Everybody okay with this one?
Okay.
This is four one one two four certified health examinations.
Test, X-ray, skin test, all the tests.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Okay, go ahead, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve approve the suggested revision of Board of Ed policy four one one two four as presented.
Second, was that Kate? Okay, it's always interesting though, the muffled man. A bit hard to tell. Um, okay, any other discussion on this one? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain?
Abstaining.
Uh, Jill abstaining. Okay, so that passes. And the next one up uh is a second reading uh for a new policy thirty four thirty five. I V E A physical compliance.
And have, I don't know, Jeff, have we got?
I know, no, nothing else on, no, nothing on this.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested revision of Board of Ed policy three four three five idea fiscal compliance as presented.
You want a second then?
All seconds.
Okay, Kim seconds it. For good discussion.
I'd like to hear Kim, your feedback on this.
The I V E A physical compliance policy, Kim?
Yeah, and we do follow all those with the assurances that are part of the grant. Um, and so each year when I file for the grant, I have to agree to all those assurances so that we they are part of our policy, just lines up perfectly with the plan.
Can you give me some examples of some of those things?
Um, so right now, our grant funding is allocated all to staff and salaries, so I'm not really tracking any specific equipment in that way that's the grant dollars. I mean, we of course track equipment if we purchase it for a specific student related to their case. Um, but it isn't funded at this moment with the grant dollars because they're all allocated for staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to quit you.
But you're up there.
I know, sorry.
Anybody else? So uh, let's see, did we have a motion?
You had a motion, had a second, and I just asked for a little further explanation, so appreciate that.
Uh, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody abstaining, opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, that's it for discussion action items for the evening, administration reports, um, just room?
A few uh quick items um come up uh one of our recent board meetings about um individual staff members who have who have passed away. We lost the pasta, who's a former, you know, um counselor over our middle school, and we think about scholarship fund or um, if Candace had some good ideas, she actually can't think about the scholarship fund idea. We had looked into that. Obviously, there's, there's a monetary component to that, but uh also the idea Candace brought, if you have of planting a tree potentially over at the middle school with a plaque, which I thought was a really nice idea. Um, so I I was gonna talk with Jason Dickson, I haven't done so yet, but I was talking with him about that, uh about that idea, and I just wanted to kind of share that we we were looking into that, the scholarship component. There is a process, obviously, for that, that is something that we can do, but uh I really liked that idea as well with.
Yeah.
Planting a tree and having a plaque uh to give you more meaningful today, he's looking down upon us, so. Um, so I just wanted to share that out, and then as it pertains to our charter, our recover recovery and reimagine, you know, charter. Um, for the committee members, uh, we are planning on, or when I get back uh from vacation, July nineteenth through the twenty second, twenty third, that week, we're gonna hold our first uh our first meeting um and engage in uh kind of the first round of discussions and start diving into that uh, you know, that that charter, the document itself, as well as uh some of our upcoming steps for the start of the school year, specific to recovery, you know, to start. So I wanted to just get that out to the full board, the date and uh when that first meeting was happening. Um, and then kind of today, I believe, we're gonna double check, but uh it looks like there's a town meeting on Wednesday night now for C I P, so the final what Dan was talking about, it did go to for the finance. What's that?
Like the twenty third?
Yeah, like this Wednesday, so yeah, I gotta reach out to the town and say, you know, just, you know, notice that these are occurring, um, because these have all been kind of two days before, and I'm like.
Yeah.
We, we need to be there, so.
Uh, I was planning on being out of town. I mean, it's, they just need to be, yes, I I don't, it was fine with the board, so it was fine with the board of finance. Um, but I literally just found out today that that's.
I'm sorry, Tim.
No.
Did you say, did you say you were going to go out of town?
Yeah.
He always does, it's like a big budget.
But I, I mean, looking at the calendar, they're saying it's wide open. I think we'll have enough YAs.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, there is, Jackie, wasn't, there's a Zoom link on it too, I think, wasn't there?
Was there?
Yeah, we looked up the agenda this afternoon. Too, so you could do it via Zoom, but I I think we'll have plenty of of YAs.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll be okay, so I guess we're gonna dig into tomorrow. Um, I called down in today, we couldn't get hold of anybody, so we'll follow up tomorrow and. We'll plan on Wednesday, it's okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So that's uh, that's all, that's all I had.
And Jeff, we, are we moving the July meeting date?
We are, yes, we think we put that out there, it's uh July twenty sixth is the new date from the the nineteen. Thank you for working on that, I think we've got almost everybody.
That's to allow Jeff not to have to work on the last of the last few days of vacation.
Greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, it's come off of that, yeah, so thank you. Okay, Amy?
This is it?
It's your last, your last.
Choosing your words, but now I'm just kidding. Um, now I want to just give a quick update in regards to device collection. So we did do a regional pulse, uh, which has changed with the last meeting and decided to allow our ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders to keep their devices over the summer. We did a poll regionally of high schools, and we realized not many high schools have for students return the vice, devices for updating. So we're able to push that out, excuse me, the updating virtually, and then once they log in on day one, it'll accept all the updates and clear off any cash and or bookmarks that they have, which we're so good about. Uh, letters will be going out to speak for any staff and students who did not return the devices. Um, so we'll have to be taking those next up, but overall, we've received ninety two percent of our items back. Which is excellent. To be able to now make sure we have that inventory. Um, and then uh the other piece is I'll be meeting with Annalise on the twenty ninth and thirtieth as a means of transition and spending some hours with her, as well as sort of having her meet with the team, which would be great. Spend some time and obviously I'll continue to be a resource for her as long as she needs me to, and happy to support that. And I guess just my sort of last words is just um acknowledging sort of Jeff as my partner in crime. And knowing that we have spent many an hours uh and time together, but he has never wavered in his support of me. And you have a true champion of Eastline here. Uh, he is very dedicated to this town, and we as administrative team try to live up to Jeff's time. And the way and the way in which he has expectations of leadership in the district, and you have, you have quite a champion here. It's been a privilege being his partner and in the work. It hasn't been easy the whole time, but it's been, it's been uh great to have such a wonderful person by my side, so. Just to publicly thank you and celebrate him for the champion of the town, I wanted to thank you.
Very good, very good. Mariana?
Um, just one thing that I update you on school dude, I had mentioned that before, that it's um been working internally. So I'm gonna work on getting that open and available now that we're going to allow, you know, open up the schools more, so we'll um allow community use, and I think that'll be a great tool. It's working great internally, and it'll allow us to be able to, you know, get a better reporting, um be able to invoice through the system and um rather than having multiple systems, it's you know, getting rid of the stacks and stacks of paper. And um so that'll be a good thing, so I just wanted to know that that will be forthcoming sometime in July.
Good.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, uh, so that's it for administration reports, committee reports, there was an FFO committee meeting this afternoon, and Eric, was there anything you wanted to share?
So we covered creative, uh, we got an update on creative and and tuition rate, so I think some of the key, so we had planned we, whenever it converted over three years ago, two years ago, to become part of our, part of our district, uh, we had come up with a tuition schedule that was gonna raise a little bit each year to get to a place to make sure that we're at least break even. And uh, we're entering kind of that third years of the increase, but it's for next year, it's full, so we are at capacity um, which is, which is great, there's a waiting list, and we will look, not next year, but the following year, and it'll be brought to the board to have discussion about can we open another class and kind of start expanding it after COVID? Don't think that expanding it right now was the right time, but just getting it, so we had uh the discussion, just looking at the tuition rates and, but that's going, it seems like it's going very well. We did the, I don't know that in front of me, but we had um, we covered the um, oh, revenue, we did take a look at revenue accounts and uh reviewed that, which we haven't done in a while, and we had implemented uh two big items, but COVID didn't let us, well, sorry, we came up with two big items, but COVID didn't let us implement. One was around our cash receipts and other receipts and how we manage that and secure it and control it. There were no sporting events, there were no, there was, there was no, there wasn't really cash coming in, so we couldn't really do anything this year, but we did talk about it, you know, starting in September, we'll kind of implement all of those controls. And then also we have controls on our expenditures, but we didn't have a ton of expenditures this year either, so both of those, we just talked again broadly about making sure that in September, we're, we're on track to do that. Mariana's on top of it all, um, so I think we're in a good place for that. And then did we cover the, oh, and then the the last topic that we didn't cover is that we may add a video, a a camera in the high school.
Senior parking lot, right?
Parking lot, three sixty degree, because that's one area we need.
Yeah.
Um, one, but we have, our cameras cover for the most part everything else.
Good. All right, that's good. Yeah, excellent. Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
That's it for committee reports, uh, board comments, future agenda topics, any comments or future agenda topics? Candace?
Ooh, I want to thank everybody for the promotion ceremonies and the middle school and the high school, I mean, all of the work that went into creating such a nice night, uh, an event for everybody at all the different levels. I just think that they did an outstanding job. Um, I love having it at the middle school, having it at the high school. Um, hopefully that's something that maybe they can continue or they they'd like to. Um, definitely just outstanding. Uh, the second thing was I brought up a um uh possibility of creating policy around um politics. Uh, and I haven't gotten anything, so I just don't know if that's gonna go to policy or if that's something that we're gonna have a discussion here with maybe Jessica Ritter, but I just want to write, you know, a second time.
Yeah.
To put that out.
Um, I was gonna put something, we have to dig into information on that, and uh, so put a weekly update, and then we can decide which way we go from there.
Very good.
Same thing, Jamie, you had brought one up as well.
Yeah.
So I I looked into both of those.
Okay, good, anybody else? Eric?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Uh, quick, so one second, what uh Candace said, I thought the graduation promotion ceremonies were phenomenal, well-run, Jason, Deb, and everyone making it. I thought they were very good. I I did think the speakers, the students who spoke, I are always great, and they always make me feel like I can't speak or write. Or or anything, but they they were phenomenal, so that that was really, it was great to hear. And uh, I enjoy all all part of them attending those. Other quick comment, we had two students, student athletes, I guess, come and talk about middle school sports, so that's something that we can I think we've talked about, and and I think we had opinions, but you maybe we just need to refresh um a conversation about it, just to make sure we're aligned.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, that's good. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Jamie, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, I would just like to thank everyone who helped make this season of the Miracle Week successful. Um, Candace, Jeff, your children were there volunteering, the baseball team volunteered, the lacrosse team volunteered. Lots of community members came and volunteered, not our community members, other towns, community members came and volunteered. It helped to make it a very, very successful first season. And we are going to have many more, so I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped us make that possible.
Good, good. Jill?
I just have a personal comment, I've been thinking while I've been sitting here. And before something happens where what I said earlier is misunderstood, I just want to be sure that I meant, I just want to be sure that everyone understands. I didn't mean any disrespect towards our medical director or the director of Ledge Light or, or you, Jeff, I was just thinking, it was just an incredible time and it was a different year and for all of us, it was very stressful in many ways. But I just was stating my opinion and again, no, no disrespect or criticism, criticism mean to, oh my gosh, meant towards anyone. So I'm a little nervous about expressing my opinion.
No, thanks, I'm not, not taken, yes. Who else? So I have one, one thing to, to share and that, that was, um, the, the graduation was, was always, just, just always a lot of fun and the weather was great. And Jeff's speech was thirty seconds too long.
Trying, definitely much better than I did.
Yeah, that's. Yeah. Depp did a fantastic job. I think she was a little nervous though, I, I could tell, since I think next year, I think next year it's going to be, it'll be a little bit, but, uh, she, it, everything went off really well.
Yeah.
So the comments I was going to make was, the first thing was, is that we should have had a step stool for Jamie, because when she handed.
Oh, my son.
Her son, it was like this incredible reach. It's so tall, um, and, uh, that was really good. And then the other one, I'm sorry, uh, Bill isn't here, but the, the picture of Bill and Jack embracing was just amazing. And I was talking to Bill's wife when I was getting my haircut. And she said they got a screenshot of the family, it was the dot company, got a screenshot of them and it's, it's just an amazing picture, so.
Oh, awesome.
Just of the happiness and, and the joy and all the students and the families that were there was really a, a very positive thing.
That's excellent.
That's good, that's good, and, and, and it was great to have so many board members attend. I know it's very difficult for everybody to have, but we had a really good representation from the board and that was fantastic too.
And the town.
And the town, yeah, we had the town, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the Board of Finance, we had a lot of Board of Finance. Yeah. So nice. Okay, so, uh, with that, um, we'll, we're going to have a brief, very brief executive session for the purpose of administrative personnel matters. Um, so we'll just take a brief recess here and, uh, and let people exit and Jeff, we don't, and, and we don't need the superintendent either, so.
Yeah, sounds good.
You can go back to work.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.